Good evening, everyone. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, 6:30 PM. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
One nation, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the Journal of May 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. May 18th Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Fourth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive file and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, did you get that second?
I did, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, Second District.
Receive file and the expansion of premises be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six, First District.
Please drop from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, Second District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Fifth District.
Receive file and refer to the Justice, Health, and Welfare Committee.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Fifth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number 11 as well, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, Second District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, Seventh District.
Please file, uh, really, uh, I'm sorry, receive file and the county councilor to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Receive and file and the appointment of Mr. James Hoffmeister as a non-voting member be held on the order of business and referred to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, Fifth District.
Um, yes, I wanted to say something about this. Um, earlier this month, I wrote a letter to our health department to better understand the impact to St. Louis County and to the health department of our state's failure to expand Medicaid, um, which is set to go into effect on July 1st. This letter that I included on the agenda tonight is Dr. Khan's response. One thing to note are some numbers that he shares, which I do hope will answer some of the questions I've received lately from constituents and stakeholders across our community. There are currently 133,698 individuals on Medicaid in St. Louis County, and expansion will increase that by over 25,000. Additionally, 50% of the current patient population served by the health department is uninsured, but much of that population would be covered if Medicaid expanded. We know that the pandemic has only exacerbated the need. I do appreciate Dr. Khan taking time to share his thoughts in this letter um, of what's at stake here and the implications for our health department. This is valuable information for all of us to have as we will be making some significant decisions about funding over the next few months. And I know Dr. Khan will be happy to talk with us more about this at the hearing that I requested just moments ago. Um, so with that, please receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number two, Fifth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, Sixth District.
So this, I, I wanna, I wanna say a little something about this as well, if that's alright. Um, after a claim was made in last week's council meeting that evictions were happening despite the moratorium, um, Councilman Tracus followed up with the sheriff's, sheriff's office and got confirmation that anyone who had that CDC declaration was not being evicted, that it was being stopped in its tracks. And I just wanna make it clear that the sheriff's office is following the CDC and our own ordinance and halting, um, the evictions. And with that, receive and file.
So ordered. Moving on to public forum. How many, um, speakers do we have this evening, Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, we have three speakers this evening.
When your name is called, um, please listen for the clerk. And, uh, before you begin, give us your name, first name, last name, and the zip code for our record. Uh, the clerk will give you a hint when your three minutes are about up. So with that, um, Madam Clerk, our first speaker is...
Madam Chair, our first speaker is Kelly McGowan, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Okay, I'm Kelly McGowan, and my zip code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity Evolve, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Vying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last summer, this legislative body passed resolutions to claim racism a public health crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African Americans. This is a great step in the right direction, but how does this translate into action that truly makes an impact? One pressing issue for North County residents is the oversaturation of liquor stores in their communities. Residents want more than alcohol-related retail in their neighborhoods. Why should residents have to go outside their communities for their shopping on a consistent basis? Not only is this inconvenient, but it takes revenue away from their communities. We have been told by members of this council that our cause in curbing the proliferation of liquor stores in North County is a noble one. However, we will receive pushback as these establishments generate revenue for communities. Business owners are not going to operate in areas overrun with liquor stores. Yet, off-premise alcohol outlets continue to open in North County. Please, make this make sense. I would like to thank Councilwoman Webb for her willingness to work with Evolve on this important matter. However, it is imperative that the St. Louis County Council ensures liquor store density is monitored and taken into consideration prior to the issuing of new liquor licenses. This is because the overabundance of liquor stores in North County is hampering its potential to thrive economically, which is a racial equity issue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and hope we can collaborate to address this important matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Arnie Deenoff.
Producing, perfecting, and giving final approval to the bill. Within a scope of only about 10 minutes, with the agenda not telling us what happened, is not only unlawful, but a bad way to do business. Public is completely shut out when this happens. I'm not sure why you continue to do this manner. As I have mentioned, there's another Sam in county government who seems to be moonlighting, Sam Alton, the chief of staff for Wesley Bell. He's paid $130,000 a year, and his wife also works in the prosecuting attorney's office. She makes $90,000 a year. I have asked Mr. Bell's office what other jobs Sam Alton has, but they refuse to say. This is an area that needs to be looked into. When people have jobs in county government that pay in the six figures, I would say outside, outside employment should not be allowed, not just under the, not just for the county executive. The proposal to redevelop Jamestown Mall is supposed to be released six weeks after promised, and it does not sound promising. It seems to mostly be the old proposal no one cared for. I think a redevelopment similar to Overland Plaza might be more appealing. Overland Plaza was once Town and Country Mall, the first mall in St. Louis. It was changed around, and today it is a very successful shopping center. I do not think the redevelopment of Jamestown Mall has been handled very well. No better proof than only two proposals were received, and one was withdrawn. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Arnie Deenoff.
Okay, thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deenoff, uh, state and county public advocate. I'm against the state-paced district. Do not be fooled by experts to make huge profits. Um, I've been listening to the Committee of the Whole meetings, and these people who were testifying are the ones who are making huge profits and huge salaries. I'm opposed to County Council Bill 76. I've been following the state legislation, and it just does not protect citizens far enough. Big money, foreclosures on residents, who cannot afford the payments to begin with? A comment that was from this afternoon's session stated, "We do not foreclose any, on anyone." That's a complete lie. We all heard the numbers in the Committee of the Whole, and of course, pace and lenders do not foreclose, but the county director and the county attorneys do the bad deed for, for them and crush the residents by violating the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment of our state and our federal constitution. Do not believe big cash, highly-paid people making profits on the vulnerable. Pace is worse than the payday loans that have high interest rates. We hear from county assessor Zimmerman, 25% in default. There's price gouging, change orders, outrageous interest rates, affordability. Attorney County Assessor Zimmerman said it best. What are we as a county doing in the loan business? And I totally agree with that. I would encourage the county council to not, not join the state district in pace and find other methods or other availability that is more, has a better interest rate and better protections for your, for the residents. The Property Assess Clean Energy Act, Chapter 67.2800 to 67.2835, I issue caution, caution, caution to the county council. Your goal is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of all 1 million residents. Put residents first over profits for the leaders and contractors. This financing issue causes me concern and heartburn. September 15th, 2019, by a 3-0 vote, the Green County Commissioners voted to withdraw from the state district pace, uh, program. On September 24th, 2019, by a 7-2 vote of the Springfield City Council, they voted to drop from the state pace program. The city of Springfield and Green County have pulled out of the pace program because residents were being ripped off, taken advantage of, and defrauded, especially by, uh, by losing their homes by the county, as the county collected for...
That has been three minutes, can you please wrap up?
Yes, um, there were 44 homes who were foreclosed on in the city of Springfield, and I'll get into next week House Bill 697, but I urge all the council members to vote against, uh, Bill 72. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that's all the public speakers.
Thank you very much, and thank all of you for coming and sharing your concerns with us. Uh, hopefully, at the next meeting, we will be doing this in, in person to person. Moving on to the county executives' report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share some of the remarks I made at my media briefing this morning. It's been great to see such strong support of our businesses with capacity restrictions lifted and more people getting vaccinated. With the warmer weather, restaurant patios are brimming with customers. Parks are filled with walkers and joggers. We are cheering on our kids in sporting events across the region. Compared to a year ago, we're in a much better place. For those who have not yet been vaccinated, we strongly encourage the use of masks when visiting a business or when unable to social distance. For those who are fully vaccinated and want to keep wearing a mask, please do. The majority of our residents are still not vaccinated, so I understand the hesitancy to go some places without a mask. Some businesses are encouraging masks, so please be respectful of the employees and the customers in those businesses. They're relying on those who are unvaccinated to be honest and to wear a mask. Our businesses are trying to operate safely, and we want them to be successful. We ask everyone to do their part. Over the past year, governments have had the herculeanium task of responding to a pandemic while continuing to deliver the services residents expect. Last year, St. Louis County received $173.5 million in Chairs Act funding to assist us in our response. My office partnered with the county council to design and administer the Small Business Relief Fund, providing more than $23 million in grants to more than 2,300 businesses. From the beginning of the pandemic, St. Louis County committed to supporting municipalities, and we set up a program to help them with costs related to COVID-19 response and recovery. Eighty-six of our eighty-six, of our 88 municipalities applied for and received a total of $46.6 million. Our municipalities were hit with unexpected expenses during the pandemic and specifically in public safety. Providing these funds to municipalities and ensuring services were available for county residents was a top priority. We also distributed more than $10.5 million to nonprofit partners for food security programs, $5.9 million for childcare programs, $9.5 million in humanitarian relief funds, and $5 million to the St. Louis County Library, purchase Chromebooks and hotspots for students and Grandpads for older adults. We also provided $7 million in housing stabilization. As the pandemic continued into 2021, it was clear help with rental and utility assistance was a pressing and growing need. On January 5th, the Treasury Department launched an emergency rental assistance program, and St. Louis County received $29.7 million. To President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act, St. Louis County is expected to receive another $29.8 million from the program. After the county council voted to accept these funds, I signed the bill into law last week, allowing St. Louis County to receive this critical grant. These additional funds will help stabilize families struggling to stay housed. For more information on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, please go to sdlcorona.com. A few weeks ago, I mentioned that we were adding more and more community partners to help make vaccines more accessible. Places of worship have long served as a place for families to turn to for guidance, safety, and trust. Today, Shalom Church in Berkeley held a neighborhood vaccine clinic. Thank you to Reverend Clark and his staff at Shalom for holding this event. Tomorrow, we will have our first partnership event with the St. Louis County Library. Vaccines will be administered inside the Lewis and Clark branch in one of their meeting rooms from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. The address of this branch is 9909 Lewis and Clark Boulevard at Anne Moline Acres. Vaccines are free, no appointment is necessary. This will be the first in a series to be offered at St. Louis County library branches all over in this spring and summer. St. Louis County Department of Public Health will be staffing the event along with members of the North County Fire and Rescue and the library system itself. Tomorrow's library event will also include book giveaways and a visit from the St. Louis Metro Market, a nonprofit mobile farmer's market. We continue looking for community partners. The health department can provide the vaccine and the vaccinators. All you need to do is provide the place and a group of folks who would like the vaccine. If you'd like to become a vaccine partner, you can find more information at sdlcorona.com. That's all for now, thank you.
Introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 144, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Tracus, an ordinance amending ordinance number 13,775 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 292-87, Shell Oil Company, Butler Hillson. Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a fuel sales contract and up to three subsequent renewals with the village of Hillsdale. Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Lawrence Group Architects of St. Louis Incorporated for professional engineering design services related to the Department of Public Health Administration building and authorizing the director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute additional necessary documents to revise the schedule of work activities as needed. Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county councilor to execute a contract with Thompson Coburn LLP to provide legal services to St. Louis County related to two bond refunding projects. Bill number 148, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county councilor to execute a contract with Gilmore &amp; Bell, a professional corporation, and White Coleman and Associates LLC to provide legal services to St. Louis County related to two bond refunding projects. Bill number 149, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept donations for use by the Department of Parks and Recreation for acquisition of fireworks, advertisement, promotion, and other expenses related to the 2021 JB Blast Event, appropriating the donations for support of said event. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
Move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held.
Substitute bill number 1 for Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold substitute bill number 1 for Bill 77.
Substitute bill number 1 for Bill number 77 is held.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill 88.
Bill number 88 is held.
Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move to hold Bill number 131.
Bill number 131 is held.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number 139. Bill number 139 is held.
Bill number 142, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 142. Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 142 is perfected.
Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold Bill number 143.
Bill number 143 is held. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
So this is the pace bill. Um, we've had a committee of the whole that was several hours long and, um, over the course of the last week, and I believe there is a lot of information that we all need to process. Um, so, and I'm off next week, so I'm gonna hold this bill for the next couple of weeks. I will be touching base with each of you sometime next week just to see where you are on this and how you wanna proceed. But for now, I move to hold substitute bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold Bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 132, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 132. Is there a second?
Second, harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 132, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 132 is finally passed.
Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 133. Is there a second?
Second, harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 133, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 133 is finally passed.
Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill number 134.
Is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember... Thank you. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 134, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 134 is finally passed. I think you're breaking up, Diane.
Ma'am?
Oh, I saw a little circle, okay.
Okay. Bill number 135, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of number 135. Is there a second?
Second, harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 135, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 135 is finally passed.
Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of... I move for final passage of Bill number one-three-six. Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam, Madam Chair, on Bill number one thirty-six, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number one-three-six is finally passed.
Bill number one thirty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number one thirty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one thirty-seven, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number one thirty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number one thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill one thirty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one thirty-eight, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number one thirty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number one forty-one, introduced by Councilmember Fitch for Councilmember Harder.
I move to, uh, I moved for final passage of Bill number one forty-one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one forty-one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number one forty-one is finally passed. Resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have one resolution this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Um, please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Jacob Lewis Page is a member of Boy Scout Troop three forty-four, and whereas Jacob has earned twenty-six scouting merit badges, including a bronze poem, was elected into Order of the Arrow in two thousand and eighteen, served in the elected leadership positions of Assistant Senior Patrol Leader and Patrol Leader, and participated in sea base, living on a sailboat for a week in the Bahamas with his fellow troop members. And whereas Jacob has achieved the highest rank bestowed by Boy Scouts of America, that of Eagle Scout, and was honored at a ceremony on May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas, for his Eagle Scout project, Jacob built an accessible ADA-compliant outdoor picnic table for the Mercy Hospital South to Grief Hospice House. And whereas, Jacob, a high school senior, achieved the rank of Eagle Scout while also earning a four-point-zero grade point average. And whereas, Jacob also excels in cross-country and track and field, competing in the Missouri State Cross Country Championship in two thousand and twenty, and plays the marimba as a member of the St. Louis Suburban Honor High School Band. And whereas, Jacob will continue his academic career at Washington University, where he will study biology and psychology. And whereas, when a young person has been so dedicated to a goal and achieved a rank earned by so few individuals, it's appropriate for the council and the people of St. Louis County to pause and take note. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council congratulates Jacob Lewis Page, his family, and his troop members and leaders on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and wishes him the very best in all his future endeavors. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Jacob as a permanent token of the council's esteem and admiration.
Um, thank you, Kevin. Um, it's so cool to see the proud Papa on this call with us tonight. Um, and Jake, I'm so proud of you and all the things you have accomplished in your short life, and I will definitely be keeping an eye on the great things I expect from you in the future. And with that, I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
I'd like to congratulate Mom and Dad as well. I went to my first Eagle Scout ceremony last week and presented a resolution and was quite impressed. So congratulations, Mom and Dad and Jake. Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Uh, resolution number one is adopted, and let me also add my congratulations to the proud parents of, uh, of Jacob and wish him much, much success in the future. Motion carries.
Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one.
Uh, hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Uh, hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business this evening, we have one, I'm sorry, we have two prepared orders. Our first order is in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Department of Justice Services.
I move for, uh, adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two is in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Office of the Assessor.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order nu- order number two is adopted. Moving on to, um, of the comments for the good of the order. Any comments this evening or announcements?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb, Councilwoman Webb, ladies first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I just want to remind everyone there will be on Thursday, a town hall meeting for Jamestown Mall Development at six-thirty. It will be virtual. We will have as our panelists the selected developers for Jamestown Mall, members of the Port Authority, and also the Department of Planning and Zoning. And so, I'm looking forward to having all of the friends and residents of District Four to be in attendance. If there are any questions, please submit those to our office, but there will be an opportunity for public comments. Secondly, on Friday at three o'clock, we will have a closed session meeting for the Animal Care and Control Shelter. This meeting will include, uh, we will discuss, uh, personnel and possibly legal issues. And so, this will be a closed session held on Friday at three P.M. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Harder.
Yes, just want to, everybody got a reminder about the, uh, first open session of our council next Tuesday, and we will be having a, uh, or the IT department will be having a run-through, I believe it's three o'clock on that date, uh, to go over the new technology in the council chambers. And if you haven't seen that, uh, take a look at, uh, the neat things that have been installed for our use, and, uh, there'll be a run-through of that as, uh, we move through our next chapter of, of meetings. So, uh, I think it'll be a great opportunity both for residents and for us as well. So, uh, thank you.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I have a follow-up to that. I am excited to be back in the chambers with everyone next week. Um, what can we, um, let members of the public know to expect? Because I know that folks are gonna want to continue to participate in our meetings, and, um, from what I understand, we are gonna be requiring all public comments to be in person, which is going to be a change from how we've done business over the past year. So I just want to make sure that the public, um, understands what to expect if they want to participate in our meetings next week.
I will be addressing that, Councilwoman Clancy.
Okay, great.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Manharder, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, and thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, that information. I did want to take a minute to provide, uh, the advance notice to members of, of the public regarding the council's return to, uh, uh, in-person meetings in Clayton. And as it stands, uh, tonight, we will be back in the council next week, Tuesday, June first, at six-thirty P.M. And so, there are a few changes that we need to, uh, keep in mind as we need, as we move forward. Uh, first of all, the chamber on the first floor will be open to the public at six P.M. after persons have been cleared through security, uh, on the street level, as you would do any other time, and that is on the bottom level of the Administration Building, forty-one South Central. Masks will be required for all unvaccinated persons in attendance. Participation in the public, uh, forum order of business will occur in the chamber and by way of email submissions only. Persons wishing to address the council during the meeting will be required to sign up to speak with a member of the council's office, as we have done previously outside, uh, the chamber due, and that will be between six and six-twenty-eight P.M. Additionally, email public comments will be, uh, uh, continued to be allowed for the duration of the state of emergency. And as you are aware, uh, the governor just extended that state of emergency through August thirty-first, and so that is why we will continue to, uh, accept email, uh, comments. Upon our return to the council chamber, members of public will still be able to view our meetings online. So, that said, please know that our posted meeting agendas will detail all of the processes that we have discussed here for in-person meetings. So please continue to consult those notices when they come out, uh, each week, so that you will be informed as to how we will proceed, uh, going forward. Did I cover everything, Councilwoman Clancy?
I think you did. Thank you.
All right, you're quite welcome. Uh, the other thing, uh, Councilwoman Fitch.
Yeah, related to that, I just wanted to, uh, say that I will be attending that meeting remotely, so we'll get it, get, be able to check out the equipment, how it works in-person and remotely. Um, and I was also the first person to be remote when we went to, uh, having the ability to be remote, or as Jason Rosenbaum said, I was the designated survivor.
Okay. All right. So, we are all looking forward to that. Uh, I can't remember the name of the constituent that comes each week, but I hope she will be happy with the fact that we are in-persons meeting. Uh, the second thing I want to mention, uh, for the good of the order, is that, uh, we're, we're going to be having a lot of committee meetings coming up. We have a lot of things that we have to deal with, and so, we're going to be counting to four, folks. When we get to four in a quorum, we're going to schedule that meeting. So please, please, please respond, uh, when you're asked and, and requested to, um, to do so for a committee of the whole or any of the other subsequent committee of meetings that we may have. So, is there anything else for the good of the order? Saying none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Webb.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening and stay safe.
Forty-two.